Good evening. Welcome to the January 31st Kedival Hills Board of Commissioners meeting. We will start by calling our meeting to order and ask if you would please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd also join us for a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Okay, first up is the agenda approval. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
No, no.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor, please signal saying aye.
Aye.
Any others? Great. All right, this brings us to the first time that's set aside this evening for public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on any topic to come share that with the board. We do ask if, when you're ready to speak at your call to find, you would approach the podium, identify yourself, please, by name and address. If you're speaking as an individual, we ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, you could keep your comments to five minutes. So with that, did we have anyone sign up?
Yeah.
Okay, then we'll call from the floor. So I see a hand already raised. Sue, welcome. If you'd like to do it first.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sue Kelly, C Village Lane, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Community Appearance Commission. Just wanted to tell you all that we have started our new year with a great deal of excitement and enthusiasm. We've done a lot of work, put a lot of effort into things, but now, this year, we're seeing ourselves with two extremely important projects, things we want to do to recommend to our Board of Commissioners for consideration. The first one of those that I will mention has to do with cigarette butts. And we had put that a little bit into the trash attack last year, and now we want to develop a campaign around educating people about what cigarette butts contain, how toxic they are, and how nasty they are, with obviously the ultimate outcome to try to get so many people from tossing them all over the place. So this is very early. We have talked about it, and we're going to do some research, and we're going to pull something together that we hope will have a good impact on our town. The next campaign has to do with our loss of the ban on plastic bags, and we're very excited about this, too. We haven't had quite as much time to begin to talk about what this might be, but we're going to address it. It has the potential to be something that we might do regionally, not just KDH, but others, but it's important. We think it's important to keep people using paper and even maybe get some more folks using paper who are still using plastic. But my point in being up here is to let you know that we welcome people's interest. One of the exciting things about these campaigns is that people are coming to us saying they want to participate. Chief Tilly, for one, and Captain Corporal Evans. Captain? Captain, captain, of course. So I wanted to let you know when our meetings are. We meet the fourth Thursday of the month, and last year we had dropped some meetings, but we've added some back. So right now, I can tell you that our next meeting will be Thursday, February 22nd. Then March is also the 22nd. April's meeting is, let's see, one, two, three, four, the 26th, and May's meeting will be, one, two, three, four, the 24th. So those are our next meetings. We'll see what the schedule looks like after those four, three meetings, but we meet at 8:30 in the morning in this room. We have made a commitment to finish our meetings by 10:00, and we've been pretty good about doing that. We welcome anybody. We welcome you to attend. They are open meetings, they are public meetings, they are advertised in the newspaper, and we would love folks to come, and we'd be more than happy to have you participate in any way. So feel free to contact me. Let's see, who's here? Skip is here. Is there anybody else from the CAC here tonight? But thank you so much for your... Terry, yes, of course. No, John. John is our newest member from the Board of Commissioners. And his enthusiasm and excitement about this stuff has already impressed the dickens out of me, so we've talked, and it's looking like some fun and some positive work. So would appreciate any assistance that you have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
That's great. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this public comment time? There is an opportunity later on our agenda if you would like to speak later in the meeting. So response to public comment, just thanks for bringing those updates, and I'm excited to hear about the two major initiatives of the CAC that's creating. And I'm not sure if you've noticed, Sue, but later on the agenda, we'll be proposing a proclamation for this board to adopt related to continuing the efficacy efforts of the ban, so, and encouraging the use of non-plastic means for bags or grocery carrier, whatever. So later on in the other agenda. Any other comments? Okay. Then we will move on to introductions and presentations, and we have Alyssa Hannan and Robin Holton, welcome ladies with the Children at Play Outer Banks Children's Museum. Welcome.
Thank you. Used to being at podium. So I'm Alyssa Hannan. I am a first light middle school, school teacher. I teach the exceptional children at our school, so very lucky to have the best job in the school and the most fun job. But I'm also the president of Children at Play. I'm also the founder of Children at Play. So I have been with Children at Play since my son Eli was an infant, and I was at home as a mother of two, and I was like, I am bored. I have been at home, I've had these two little kids, I have no one to talk to. We should start a children's museum, and it's all good ideas to start with young mothers with babies and two-year-olds. This museum has grown, and my son is now 10, and so is the museum. So we have started this children's museum in order to have a place for young children at play here in the Outer Banks, and I wanted to bring some information about it to you so I could tell you a little bit about it and talk to you a little bit about our history with the town of Kedival Hills. So, and real quick before I start my slideshow, Robin Holton is our current executive director. She's wonderful. She actually used to work for the Dare County School System as well, so we have a lot of teachers that have their hands in this school, or this museum, which is really neat because it's nice to kind of tie it all together. So if you don't mind going to the next slide. So here's our children's museum, a little history. We were across the street in Kitty Hawk. We are located in Kitty Hawk at Buccaneers Walk. If you don't know where that is, that's where Captain Franks is. So we all just associated ourselves with Captain Franks. We were across the street, and then Hurricane Sandy came in and wiped us out, and we started over in 2013, and we have done very well. We've been in our current location for six years. We were established in 2009. We're a local resource for early childhood education. We work a lot with the Dare County Children and Youth Partnership, which is a great resource for young children here in the Outer Banks, and we make sure that we can kind of collaborate with them as much as possible in order to provide them resources and a way to use the museum in multiple different ways, such as parenting classes and playgroups and all kinds of different lessons, and we've even done some parenting, how would you, parenting class group session workshops with the Children Youth Partnership, which is great. Our revenue sources are admission fees and membership fees. This is always kind of a gray area for people. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit children's museum. We have to charge admission fees in order to cover the overhead cost of operating our children's museum. So we do charge admission, as do most museums that aren't government-funded. We do also write grants and donations. We ask for donations, but we write grants, and we have received a number of grants since we opened, and we have been very grateful to receive a number of donations from the Outer Banks community. We have seen, since we opened, or is this just in 2017? Sorry. Just in 2017, we had 15,100 people in the children's museum, or an average of 1,258 per month. As any other business in the Outer Banks, in the summer, we are slammed. We have to turn people away, the tourists are coming in in droves. In the wintertime, we're not that busy, but it's a wonderful time for our locals because that's really when they need the children's museum the most. Right currently, we have 175 families that have annual memberships. That means that they pay a one-time fee, and they're able to come to the museum anytime they want to, using that membership with their children and parents or grandparents or whoever they put on the membership. And we have 75 families that receive free memberships, which is a wonderful program. We started about five or six years ago with a grant from the North Carolina GlaxoSmithKline Foundation, who sponsored memberships to families that were either low income or at risk in Dare County and Currituck County, as well as the Department of Social Services in Dare County and Currituck County. And what that did was allow those families and those community social workers to come into the museum at no cost, and it was a great way for us to open our doors and include everybody and not just those of us that could spend $75 for the year to come, you know, with their children. So it's an equal opportunity museum, and we try to get everybody in there as often as possible. All right, thank you. So here are exhibits. So our exhibits are based on learning through play, social navigation. It's a community gathering space. So kids, not only little kids like you see at the bottom, this little girl's three years old, who comes to the museum quite often and does have a free membership, but we actually also bring students from our classrooms into the children's museum. It's really a wonderful resource for our exceptional children because they can actually play and explore and feel really comfortable, but they also learn how to be in our community and how to interact with different people, but it's a very closed and safe environment where their teachers can be with them, and we can kind of work on some social navigation. So it's really a neat space for anywhere from kids zero to 16. Can change, sorry. I keep forgetting how to clicker. So one of our favorite exhibits in the children's museum is our Carolina Flare fishing boat, and this is based off a North Carolina boat that was developed here in the Outer Banks. And we talk about fish that you can catch here locally offshore, and then the kids are able to go into the fishing boat, catch the fish, they take them to the market. At the market, they sell them to the cafe. The cafe is able to cut them open, look at all the guts and the insides, and they are able to cook the meat and make fish toppings, so, which is my favorite part. Over on where the little boy in the police outfit is waving a stick, it looks like he is actually crabbing, and so there he has to pull in the crabs and he has to sort them. And we base this on how crabbers locally actually set up their crabbing sorting table. We have the lighthouse, which really doesn't need much explanation. We talk about our local lighthouses, and the kids like to paint the lighthouse and keep it up to par, and they like to make, be the light keeper. The theater, they love to play dress up. We have a lot of themes like crabs, turtles, Nemo, fish, anything that's coastal, and the stage eventually is going to become a beach house. It's kind of making a transformation so that we can make it more of like a, we had to have an idea of a traditional beach house from maybe the 1920s where they're wearing bathing costumes, and the kids can actually dress up in the, you know, the 1920s, 1930s costumes that'll look really different and take pictures, and just a little, another little history from the Outer Banks. And so of course, there's a market in every children's museum I've ever visited. Children love to grocery shop. They don't love to grocery shop with their parents, but they do love to grocery shop on their own. So this way, they have a grocery store where they can practice shopping on their own. And here's the cafe where we buy the local fish and make the tacos and the burritos and have tea parties. The post office is where we deliver different mail. The kids learn about the mailing system, and the different mail in the children's museum has pictures of the different exhibits, so the kids can look at it and they can say, oh, this goes to the boat, and they take it to the boat, and they pretend like they're the postmaster or the mailman. And the teddy bear hospital, which was sponsored by the Outer Banks Hospital, this is one of the kids' favorites. They love to be the doctor. Every once in a while, they jump up and they're the patient, but usually the teddy bears are the patient, and they learn how to take care of the teddy bears, diagnose what's going on, and generally, it's something that's going on with their diet or exercise, and then they have to teach the teddy bears how to use the exercise equipment in the children's museum and how to eat healthy using our puzzles. Additional exhibits, we have a lot of STEM exhibits, so science, technology, math, engineering. The Bernoulli blower is extremely loud, but the kids love it, and it talks about Air Force and how it keeps the ball spinning up in the air as it moves underneath, and I think eventually this moves into how jets stay up and airplanes, and I know it's a very basic science concept that moves into some pretty high-tech science concepts, and the children love anything that they can turn on or move or turn. We also have a sand table, we have a train table, and we have the big blue blocks, and the big blue blocks we're giving us, are donated by the Outer Banks Community Foundation, and that is a really, really neat way that the kids take these giant blocks and make houses and ramps and cars and all kinds of different things. Gem mining is one of our newest exhibits as well, and this is actually the first exhibit that we've ever charged for. Kids can come and they can go mining for fossils, gems, and shells, and it's a really, really neat exhibit that we have outside on our porch, and it's a way that we're hoping to sustain the museum in the summer months, bring the tourists in, and give them a neat little, you know, trinket to take home with them so they're able to come and do this. So I've pretty much gone over a lot of these programs. We do do Science Thursday, every Thursday, so we talk about a different science topic each month. This month, it's coming up in February, is our Local Heroes Month, so we're going to be highlighting our police force, our EMS, Coast Guard, and a missing one, is it?
Police.
Police.
Fire.
And the fire department, of course. And the fire department, so they all come, and they're actually bringing the Coast Guard boat, and I believe John Towler's coming and bringing his car, and they come and they talk to the kids about how they're heroes and what they do for our community. Tuesdays Together is one of my favorite programs, has started five or six years ago also. This is where we bring adults with intellectual disabilities into the children's museum as mentors, and these adults come in and make arts and crafts with preschoolers. So we have like anywhere from two to four-year-olds, and they come in as, with their preschool group, and then these adults from the Monarch, or Beach, or Lighthouse Club, so Currituck and Dare County, come in and together they make a craft, and the adults are the ones that are teaching the kids how to make the arts and crafts. It's a really neat way to empower these adults with intellectual disabilities and give them, you know, a new outlet for volunteering. Sensory Santa and Bashful Bunny are both programs that we've done for kids with special needs where they can meet Santa Claus or the Easter Bunny, but it's quiet, there's not a lot of noise, there's not a lot going on, so it's kind of their opportunity to get their pictures of Santa, but not have so much action that they're worried about coming in there with a bunch of other kids. And here's some more pictures. You can just take it all in, but we have done a lot of many different things, cooking demonstrations, kids yoga, teenagers come into the museum and volunteer, we do music, art classes. Over the years, we've had workshops, we have had a plethora of different things in this little tiny children's museum, which is pretty amazing for the size it is. It's about 2,500 square feet. So we've had a lot of people in there, we've had a lot of scientists in there, we've had a lot of community members in there. We've actually had people from UNC Chapel Hill come and volunteer as a service project in the summer. So we have a lot going on in the museum and as a nonprofit, and part of the reason that we're here, other than just to give you some information, we're starting to go around to every single town in the Outer Banks and say, hey, guys, we're here, and we love being here, and we love to be a service for the Outer Banks community, and then we're asking towns, how would you like to get involved? I know that we're not in the town of Kedival Hills. We actually would love to be in the town of Kedival Hills. We've looked at a lot of properties in the town of Kedival Hills, and that could be a possibility in the future, but as of right now, we're still in Kitty Hawk, but we are asking different towns to, you know, find out ways that you could get involved in the children's museum and support the children's museum. This has been probably the leanest winter we've had to get through until the tourists come back, and so we are hitting the pavement hard because I feel like it's been a couple of years since we've really gotten out there. Now, I did come to talk to the town of Kedival Hills when we first opened our doors in 2018, and the town donated an exhibit, one of our first exhibits ever, to the children's museum, and it was an airplane. It was really, really cool, and we had a local artist paint the wall and the Wright Memorial, and so the airplane was actually flying to the Wright Memorial, which is really, really cool, and the kids loved it. It was not my favorite exhibit because it was a teeter totter, and it was very loud, but they loved it, and that stayed with the old children's museum when we had that hurricane. So we are coming to different towns, and we're going to just talk about what the museum needs and moving forward, how the towns can help. If you can go to the next slide. So these are some of the sponsorship levels, and you guys have this PowerPoint presentation, so it's something you guys can look at later, obviously, but I wanted to throw some numbers out there because this is some of the amounts that the children's museum looks at each month. Amount of operations is the top dog for a nonprofit, $8,500, just to keep the museum open each month, which is a hard number to get to, especially starting in December and getting through March. But once we get to March, the tourists start coming back, and they start to help sustain the business. So some ideas that we have coming up, we would like to bring back the airplane idea or some type of airplane. We've also talked about hang lighting or something like that, wind turbines, since we do have one big wind turbine here in Kedival Hills. I know it's privately owned, or less common ideas. Is that the last one? Do you guys have any questions? I know there was a lot of information. I try to talk fast because I know you guys have a lot to get through tonight.
Alyssa, thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
Thank you. Great presentation and great information, and something certainly for the board to discuss when we go into budget workshops.
That would be great. Thank you so much for considering us.
Thank you both.
Thanks for what you guys do. It is great. Impressive of the numbers. I had no idea, 15,000 per year.
It's very busy. Very. A lot of wear and tear. Everything.
Right. That many people in 2,500 square feet.
Yes, definitely.
Great. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on then to new business, item one, the land use plan, an update, and the citizen participation plan. And Debbie, is Brian going to give it first? Love you, Brian. Thanks.
I don't have much to add above what was in there is memo, other than planning staff did work with administration and our consultants for land use plan update, and a couple revisions of the citizen participation plan. And it basically just outlines how the planning board will be the main group to develop the plan, how, have a few workshops with the Board of Commissioners, and then how the public will be involved in developing the plan. The consultant was in town, it was one day last week, we did our initial meeting agreement, took him on a tour around town, showed him the different areas, and they're getting to work, and this is the first piece of the memo. I believe he is planning on being at the February planning board meeting with the first documents to actually get into the deal.
And for anyone in the public who hasn't had a chance to look at what's in our packet with how it was laid out, there's, as Brian said, the planning board is really going to kind of be the main forum that this work is done in, but there's built-in opportunities for citizen involvement. There is also going to be a joint work session between the planning board and the Board of Commissioners, but there's opportunity for an open house that's later, after some of the work is done, is a way to share with the public during the process, and certainly all the meetings are open to the public, so there's plenty of opportunity for public engagement and comment. Questions, comments for the board on this?
I was just, I was excited to see that the planning board was going to be the supervisory role because we have a really lot of talented people that are on the planning board, and they have a firsthand knowledge of the data, you know, day-to-day planning activities in the town. So I thought that that was real good. I've been to some of the planning board meetings, and we've got real good members on there. They've demonstrated their dedication and their concern for the town, and I think it's going to be good. I like the fact that they're going to have an interactive website. That's going to make it easy to make comment, and I think it's a well-laid-out plan. You know, I think the average citizen will be able to participate and share a lot of their information. The company, HCP, they've demonstrated that, you know, they've done over 150 land use plans, and they've done a great job, well-documented performance, so I'm fickle to death with it.
Great. Anyone else want to comment? And our action tonight would be a motion to approve the land use plan, citizen participation plan as presented.
So move. Second.
All those in favor, please signal saying aye.
Aye.
Any others? Oh, great. I know Meredith sent out today, or maybe it was yesterday, it's, yeah, yesterday, the land use plan survey results. Is that something that we're going to post on the website, or if, I know we've had some people at prior meetings ask, or what's our opportunity, or is that going to be built in this process for getting that information to the public?
I think there's going to be a link, but I'll refer to Mary.
We wanted to make sure the board had it.
Sure.
All right. Going on the website.
Okay.
Going on Facebook.
Okay. But that is the plan now, now that we've all received it.
So we can take care of that later this week.
Okay. Perfect. That's great. Thank you. Okay. Then we will move on to item number two. This is workforce multifamily housing density bonus. And is that Brian as well?
Ryan again.
Back up, buddy.
So at your last meeting, Casey gave a presentation, the legalities of what happens when a project is built to its maximum density, and you have owners that purchase units under the workforce housing designation that by ordinance would not be allowed to be removed from that designation. So my memo summarizes what our ordinance allows currently and proposes three potential options for text amendments that you all can consider, or how we could make changes to ensure that owners could potentially get out of that designation. Have to go through them individually if you have questions.
So in the packet, there were the, basically, the three options for us to kind of explore and discuss. You have any questions, first and foremost, about the difference between the options?
Yeah, I think number one, I understand pretty clearly. Could you just library a little bit on the second one for me?
Sure. Number two is sticking with our current measurement of density, which in that zoning district is units per acre, basically divide the size of lot by how many units you're allowed to have, and that tells you how many units you can have, and that's regardless of building size or bedroom count. Currently, it is 12 units per acre. Would have to be somewhere in the range of 14 plus to make that change in order for all units to be removed in the future. Again, that's how this measures multifamily density. We have changed our unit measurement for multifamily in hotel and hotel in a few different zones to the floor-to-air ratio, which basically just regulates the size of the structure. You leave it up to the developer to figure out how to chop it up and how many bedrooms to put in it. And so that's what my option number three is, just explains how we do that in the ocean impact residential zone and Just explains how we do that in the ocean impact residential zone and in the commercial zone for a few different types of structures. It's a number in the range of one-fourth, which is very similar to some of our other zones, um, would potentially work for this as well. A few options to consider. Back in the day when the original request for, or to change how we measure density on the ocean front from units per acre to the four air ratio made a lot of sense. Regulate how big of a building you want. And then you let the market or the developer or the potential owner decide how many units we're gonna get out of that.
So thoughts or comments? Questions?
Personally, I kind of like the flexibility that the third option gives developers. Kind of here's your lot, there's how big you can build it, make what you want. It gives them the ability they can customize over these, their, their property. So on a property rights standpoint, I, I, number three jumps out to me. Thanks for the better explanation.
I, I would agree with that. Um, I think that it, it gives the, uh, the property owner and the builder the, the flexibility to be able to determine what they want to do as far as what they need. Um, I, I favor number three option also.
And I was, I'm, been in the mindset, I've been evaluating this, is looking at, um, either three or eliminating the density bonus and just going with the fee waivers. Um, so even in one of the situations we're looking at now, because there will be potentially, I don't know, I go back to the numbers, whether it's three or four units that likely would not, um, be able to come out of workforce housing. Unless there's a, a change made, um, if we weren't providing the density. If the density part was removed, then they're paying the fees and they can, or they can stay in whatever is, whatever's working based on the market and based on the need and, um.
Is that? On that first page, if, if desire to town could continue to offer waiver fees, is that sort of like a fourth option? Would it be congruent with one of the other three?
How I imagine it would work is that we would still leave workforce multifamily housing in the ordinance. You would, um, either increase the density under units per acre or adjust to a number under four air ratio that would work. While still giving the option of waiving the fees.
So kind of a combination of three and the fees.
And we would have to figure out what measure we use to still allow people to classify as a workforce housing. Even though you're not getting the extra density, but you're getting a free prom and a free water down.
Right.
And all the fees that you wave now.
I personally like that direction a lot. I think it provides some flexibility, but yet still, um, it, it keeps with the original intent of wanting to do something on behalf of the town to support workforce housing. But yet not finding yourself, as things change, locked into something that you or folks that purchase can't live with at the end of the day.
I'd be, I'd be, um, okay with number three. I'd be okay with number one too.
Legally, where do we stand on this?
Well, it would solve the issue for number one. And then are we allowed? Yes. So, um, me all I have to say, I think that's about the only analysis needed there. So, e- any, any of these options, we are allowed to, to enact. Um, as Brian said, there's even more that we could do there. We could create a hybrid scenario if we chose to stick with the waiver of fees. And more importantly, it would also get to the root of what the, the board's had an issue with, what issues it generates.
So if we went for the hybrid, so to speak, of three and the fees and considering that, is that something then staff would take back? Okay, staff would work at it, send it to the planning board and then come back this route?
Right. It needs to come through the planning board to the board commissioners and we then set up a hearing.
Okay. Is that consensus on?
That's a good.
Okay. And are you fine with just consensus saying let's move in that direction or do you need an official there?
No, you've, um, Brian's got his direction.
Okay. Are you fine with that?
Sure, thank you. Very good.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, we have to share this with you. Basically written down before you spoke.
I did, well, I've written down this. Mayor should really speak about the initial intent, keeping with that spirit. And I was gonna slide and you hit it, man.
Before you could slide, you said it.
I don't know if there's some connected, I don't know what's happening right now, but that was awesome. It was me, I passed.
It's all, it's all mine.
Great minds think alike, love it. Okay. Super. All right, I think that's. All right, well, gosh, we are already on to commissioners' agenda. Commissioners, right, you have anything for us this evening?
You were right. Sitting down here, always get it first, right?
I can mix it up if you would like for me to, just to make sure you keep it in order.
I attended, um, the UNC School of Government, North Carolina League of Municipal School for Newly Elected Officials in Chapelville. I found it to be very, very informative. Uh, it satisfied the state requirements of ethics training for newly elected officials. Uh, some of the topics discussed were open government and transparency in government. Uh, these were highlighted topics and, uh, many other important topics were discussed. We covered budgeting issues, um, record keeping and a lot of time was spent on ethics in municipal government and financial management. We did hear one comment that the backbone and, and one of the things that Killable Hills is actually known for is how good our town clerk is. Um, so the clerk's office does well and, uh, because they talked about it up there. Uh, I was pleased to hear comments and offerings of programs and expertise to assist in addressing challenges municipal governments deal with, uh, on a daily basis. Uh, they have a lot of resources that we can take advantage of, pipe back. Uh, regardless of what the programs were, it was very, uh, well-attended and I thought it was very valuable. So that was, that was one item I had. The, uh, second item that I had, I'm sure the board received, um, the email that I got, um, uh, from a citizen. Um, and she was talking about, uh, going into a little more depth, uh, in our explanation of motions and actions and, and so on and so forth. And one thing that stuck out to me was, um, she had recommended committee reports with commissioners that are on committees. And I, I would just bring that up and say, you know, we need to think about that. If you're on a committee, it might be good to do some sort of report or at least to say, we didn't have a meeting or, or what have you. Uh, that, that was one of the items. Um, she talked also about, um, kind of a recap of, uh, town business. And I think that's probably something that should be forwarded to the manager and let the manager decide how to best come forward with any reports from departments. So if we can forward that email, I don't think she was copied on it, but if we can forward that email, did, did you get a copy?
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, and then the, uh, the last item that, that I wanted to bring up was I got the letter where you had pointed out about the, uh, person that stopped and picked up all the trash. Uh, that was, that's, that's a common everyday occurrence with our guys in public works. They do a fantastic job and that was great. Congratulations to them. And that's it, man.
Great. Thank you so much.
I also had the pleasure of attending the central municipal government training in Chapel Hill last week. Uh, very informative and valuable training. Uh, thank the town for, for to be the, the opportunity to go. Uh, really enjoyed the networking, got to, to meet some other leaders here in Dare County all across the state and hear their stories and learn from them. And the time was real well spent. We learned a lot of lessons. I, I, I will say one thing that I took away was, uh, triple-check everything before you hit the send button. Like in everyday life, we'll write an email or write a text and kind of think and pause before we send it. But in our role, like we, with public records, we have to be extra careful and extra respectful. And that was, uh, a valuable lesson to really take that into consideration. Um, on January sixteenth, I attended our, uh, Saving Lives Task Force meeting in Dare County. And many of you may see in your seats in the front of the entrance, uh, next Wednesday, February seventh, I had the first light high school auditorium. Uh, the Saving Lives Task, Task Force is going to host a town hall. It's going to discuss several of the substance abuse issues in our county, uh, from, from different viewpoints. And we'll also have a guest speaker from, uh, I believe, uh, from Raleigh talking about infection diseases and how they are amplified. Uh, through our opioid epidemic. This town hall is free. It is really a quality valuable event. I, I invite everybody here, if you can, to please attend. Uh, and, and spread the word on this because the more participation or knowledge we have, uh, the more we can get out of this. And I, I, I've been going to Saving Lives Task Force meetings, uh, for a few months now. And I couldn't be more impressed with all the dedicated work that's going on there. And I, I want more people to find out about that. Um, I wanted to take a minute to, uh, congratulate Sue Kelly, being reappointed to the chair of the Community Appearance Commission. And I also want to announce that the 2018 trash attack has been scheduled for April twenty-first. Uh, it'll be from nine AM to one AM. Lots more information will come out about that in, in between now and then. Uh, so mark your calendars. Uh, we got a room full of dedicated citizens ready, uh, willing to come out last day of the month for a meeting. So I hope to see everybody here helping us pick up trash on the twenty-first. It's a great event. It really helps our town and I, I, I hope to see a record turn out this year. And last thing I have is kind of a question that I, for, with the board. Uh, when I, last night I was looking at the, uh, survey results and I liked, you know, how the pages were broken down by questions and then results. But is there any interest among other board members in maybe taking a more perspective dive? Where we look at the previous surveys from ninety-seven and oh-seven, similarly worded questions? And then maybe put page by page results for previous surveys. And it may not be verbatim exactly the same, but a lot of the same topics were covered. So maybe we could have more perspective if there's been any fluctuation, how much consistency there is from town feedback over the last twenty years. Just see what, that's something that interests me and I don't really want to proceed with it until I get everybody else's thought. Is, is there any interest in that? Cause maybe I've burned some tasks, asked staff to do, but maybe some general public interest in that. And just seeing, you know, on these big topics, has there been change or is there consistency or, you know, have we moved around too much? But that's just an idea I had last night and wanted to get everybody's feedback, what they think on it.
Yeah, looking at trends is, is looking at trends in the surveys, is that part of any of the process, um, comparing?
I wouldn't think so now because the survey is not a requirement of the camp land use plan update.
What you, what you would have, even though your questions are gonna be different, is your survey from the prior land use plan update, which was a number of years ago. I don't, I don't know how much value that would be because you're not gonna necessarily have the same questions. You had, it was different.
The questions may be.
Different hurting issues.
Yeah, but we have the data and, and I kind of like the idea of seeing if the, the same topic is covered, albeit the questions may not be worded the same. It may give us some perspective for making decisions and just knowing, hey, if there's movement, is it the same? See if there's any change in public opinion of some of these issues. That's all.
So, so are you suggesting an, an additional survey?
Taking the previous, the one done in ninety-seven and one done in oh-seven. Taking, finding questions that have common ground that address the same, and then putting the results from the previous ones like stacked on a page. So you can see other, it's basically a trend between.
Basically doing a comparison. If, if any of the questions align, I think that'd be the first thing, just finding questions that may align.
Yeah, we can do that. They may not, they may not be exact, but.
Not be exact, but I just don't see trends in it, that things have changed and, uh, people would give, they'd help me kind of make decisions and I like the numbers.
Let us work on it.
Oh, yeah, I, I.
And, um, see what we, what we put together and get that way before actually getting anything back to you.
Yeah, is that what you can do an assessment of?
Right.
Where are the right. How many questions align and what information could be shared?
If the board's interested, I don't wanna, you know, create a lot of work for somebody if it really.
Well, I think that would give, the first step is to let them evaluate what kind of useful information would even be produced from it. And if it's enough useful information, then I think it would be worthwhile and other. Okay, absolutely.
And, uh, one more thing and I'll be done. Uh, most of us plan on being at the forum for oil exploration next month, the twenty-sixth. Uh, should we like talk at all about, are we all gonna make individual statements? Will we all make one statement as referencing the town? Like how, how are, how will we present ourselves and how we're, could it, how would it go? We could get a lot of people there and we don't have that much time. And we'd go up Killable Hills and make one united statement or all this, you know, we'd kind of be talking about that before we all get there.
I don't know how they're structuring how much time. I know I, um, have corresponded with the surf riders and I don't know what they did. But as far as passing my name, I have to go ahead and say that I would speak and I figured I'd be speaking on the resolutions that we've adopted and that we've. But I also, if there's time allowing for multiple speakers, I think that's great. I mean, I know we both felt, we went to the Dare County meeting. Um, I, I just don't know what the format exactly is gonna be like. But I think if there's an opportunity to speak and for them to hear from multiple people, I don't think that's, I think we're all gonna basically have the same message. Which is what we've discussed and approved on, approved at this level. But I, I think hearing from multiple voices is absolutely okay.
I think there's gonna be so many people there. I'm, I'm not sure anybody with more than talk would get the chance anyway. I can't imagine there's gonna be hundreds and hundreds of people. I can't, you know, I mean, I'm offered speaking or having somebody speak on our behalf. But I don't know if it's gonna be kind of a madhouse, I think.
I, I agree. And I, I think that, uh, if we have the mayor speak for us, uh, and at the same time, if we're there, she can indicate. And I have my board with me, um, that shows a certain amount of, uh, you know, unison. Um, and, and that's what I would prefer. I think that would be a better thing, but I think there's gonna be so many people there, it's just gonna be crazy. That would be my vote.
Happy to. Yeah, I mean, I think calling out is very great. Think of us?
Hold on.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I will speak a little bit. I realized, um, after that email that I am sometimes remiss in speaking on some of the committees that I sit on. So I will do so tonight. Um, I sit on the Southern Alamo Association, which is a group of, um, counties that represent this, the southern area of all of the, the areas here for all modal areas of transportation. And that includes, um, air, ferry, bridges, roads, et cetera. So, um, we meet once a quarter and, um, we met last week and that was in Roper. And we had someone from the middle part of the state and he was talking about the RPO, which is a rural planning organization. And I also happen to sit on our local RPO, which is here in this part of the state. Which was kind of ironic that we didn't have our RPO speaking, but anyway. So, um, at any rate, um, I'll, I'll report on that at the next meeting. So we, we, we got some information. At those meetings, we get information, some updates about what's happening with the Bonner Bridge and, and how things are going. And, um, how the funding sources are, are working with that. And, um, this meeting, I sit on the executive committee for, for that SAA. And then we have an annual meeting in October as well. So, um, there wasn't a whole lot of updates at this meeting because, because it was just a regular, um, board meeting. Um, we, we didn't have a, um, a huge update. Um, in fact, the update on the Bonner Bridge was, yes, we're working on it. So, um, I, I, I think, um, people who drive over it see, see as much about anything. Um, anybody who's involved in transportation and, and knows how the funding source on that works. Years and years ago, there were lots of different sets of pots of money for, for different things. Um, and now they've kind of locked everything together. So those that are, um, buying for the pots of money for, um, airplanes or for, for airports. So those that are, um, buying for the pots of money for, um, airplanes or for, for airports are also, um, it's the same pot of money for the, um, I'm having problems talking, sorry. It's, they've lumped it all together, whereas it used to be separate. So bridges is the same as airports, is the same as highways, is the same as sidewalks, which is absolutely ridiculous. So at any rate, that's, um, that's my report on that, which is not a great report. But, um, it, it's confusing at best and when, especially when you go to try to assign values and, um, and, and make things compared, it's when you're looking at a ferry that costs this much versus, uh, road that's this much. It's, it's very difficult to, um, to look at those and, and get that straight. So at any rate, it's, um, it, it's tough and I, I, we, we, for years, when I first started and, and all the pots of money were separate, it was a lot easier. And we've spent the last five or six years just trying to get the state to maybe separate that back out. But I don't think that's going to happen. So I think it's much easier for them to just say, y'all need to, um, fight for the same amount of money. So, um, at any rate, that's that. And then the next, the next subcommittee meeting that I'll be going to is the Rural Planning Organization meeting, which is where we actually vote on which part of that gets that. And that's just the local part of that. So those are my two things for that. And, um, while I'm happy with your attention, I would like to say that, um, we are accepting applications for Outer Banks Senior Games. So anybody who wants to apply for that can, um, call the bottom center or register online. So.
I would, I would if I was older.
Fifty or older, we've lowered the age.
Fifty, wow.
Fifty, I know. Yeah.
Wow, great.
I'm here again, huh?
Yes.
Yeah, we've, uh, Steve Albright and myself and Jerry Prolik and a couple of members of, uh, Steve's, uh, staff at McGowan. I'm doing our street assessment, which the last time we did it was five years ago. And we expected it to be done in mid-December, but we had, uh, two days canceled because of the snow. And then we, last Friday we were supposed to finish up and we couldn't go because it was raining and wet. And you can't really tell much about the roads when they're wet. We usually go out for like three hours, nine in the morning until noon and just drive around. And we have a rating system, which we've used here for a good many years. And, uh, some streets have changed and are going to need some work, but all in all, they're in fairly decent shape. And because some scheduling that Steve has and Derrick, they have, uh, some meetings to go to this week. So they're going to try to get a date next week where we can get that finished. We only have about two hours of work left to finish up the last section of streets between the highways on the north end. And, uh, that report will be put together and we'll, at our next streets committee meeting, um, after our next streets committee meeting, I'll, I'll be able to bring you a report on how that went. Uh, we had our first tourism board meeting of the month, start of the year, uh, for, uh, last week. And, uh, rather than me go by memory and tell you what all happened, um, I'm waiting for the minutes to be, um, published and then I'll, you know, refer to them and then maybe add them to, to Censworth, so I can give a report on that meeting. Another thing I want to talk about is, um, we have the disc golf course now back in our forty-four acre plot back there. And one of the things that we had talked about doing back there was, um, doing a dog park. And, um, that's still something that I'd like to very much see happen. And we could probably hopefully get some sponsors for that too, so it wouldn't cost us anything like the disc golf course. It didn't, wasn't no cost to the town, it was all done by solicitations and advertising and stuff. And, um, Sheila and I were talking and we're thinking, uh, if there's another location we might be able to use for that, it might be better than back there, um, cause it's kind of a long, not a long drive, but it's kind of back there in the woods. And I think people would be happier if we had it someplace more, more centered towards the town complex. You know, on the park or something. So I plan to take a look at that and see if there's a adequate space for it somewhere on that town property or on property we could use for it. And as soon as I can, um, look at that and I'll talk about it probably at our next meeting. And going to try to figure out, you know, I went looking for people to help with it, obviously, and spearhead it. I know, uh, Daryl Davies did tremendous amount of work on the disc golf course, him and Derek Dow and others. And, uh, I wouldn't ask him to do this, but maybe I will. Um, if we had somebody that.
I think he's quite as passionate about that.
He'd say what? But I'm going to try to get some people, get some volunteers together to look at that situation and, um, I think use the same sort of a process we use with the, with the disc golf course. Hasn't really worked out well for us. Took a little longer than we hoped, but it's quite a place if you get, uh, get a chance, get back there and look. It hasn't had an official grand opening yet, that'll be, I believe, this spring.
I know, there's still, have some parking lot work and, yeah. People have been going back there because the, um, baskets are in, but it's not officially, yeah, officially open.
Yeah, I ran into a friend that I hadn't seen for a little while and was talking to him. He said, boy, that place back there is pretty nice. And I was like, you go back there. He said, I'll get back there all the time, man, I've been playing there for weeks. So, uh, and I, I didn't even, didn't even know I was ready to go personally. Anyway.
Yeah, it's not officially.
So don't go back there.
Now more people are going to, because now they're going to be intrigued. It's all good.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to get that, Daryl, um, excuse me, a lesson, I've never done it. That'll be fun.
You know, Mike mentioned the dog park, I, I will throw out there, um, so, you know, there's one in Kitty Hawk and there's one in Nagsted. And, um, after visiting both of them, I really like what Nagsted did. Um, you know, for a couple of reasons, I think it's just, it was really great end product. And I don't think that's originally where they were looking at. But, um, their dog park is backed up by Sutter, Sutterfield parks where there's, you know, all those soccer fields. And so they built it, um, and they didn't make it grass. I mean, it's basically just the terrain, they cleared it out, they left a lot of trees. Um, so there's pine straw and dirt and sand mostly instead of grass. You don't have to deal with the irrigation and, um, but it's really nice. What you're seeing is multi-use there, where families may go, you know, the kids are out on the soccer field playing soccer and then the mom or the dad is able to take the dog to the dog park. And so that's, Mike mentioned it just this morning. I said, you know, maybe if there was a better place, especially if you could keep it more of a rustic type look, closer to Aviation Park where you could, and I don't even know that that's feasible, I'm just throwing that out there. But, you know, I, I don't know between the skate park and say the town complex, any of that area. Um, if it could be fenced out and left really rustic or I don't know, that's, you know, I just don't know. But I think the way they've done that shared use has just worked really, really well. So just have a good thought.
Ross and I, um, have actually started some of that research.
Oh, have you? Okay.
Yeah, so we've done a little bit of preliminary work for the general area that you're thinking, so.
Well, I bet Mike's going to be meeting with you now. He'll be setting something up, but thank you. That's great. Wonderful. All right, well, if you don't mind, we'll move on then to, um, mayor's agenda. There's a couple of items already in our packet and then I have a few more to go over. Um, the first is just to announce or remind, if you've already got this on your calendar, that Saturday, February seventeenth is going to be the second of our town talks. Um, we started this back in December. We're just for about an hour and a half, we grab coffee at Front Porch, um, and have different town, um, a different town department staff there from that department able to chat with citizens on just a very informal casual basis. So back in December, um, the police department was represented. They have had a number of officers and the chiefs were there, um, just some citizens talking, you know, stopping, talking about. Uh, stopping by and talking about, um, someone had questions, you know, back then we were dealing with a lot of the, the car break-ins and so on and so forth. So that was a hot topic, but, um, so this time on February seventeenth, it's going to be our Public Works Department. So if you're interested in, um, coming out and meeting with any of the staff and certainly any of the commissioners that are available to be there, it's a great opportunity for us as well. It doesn't have to be a planning, I mean, excuse me, a Public Works Department question. You just come out and anything that you want to chat about. So, uh, mark your calendars. And that will be at the Front Porch Cafe, um, located in Kilvehills at the Melfer Six Shopping Center.
I went to the line where we had the police department and I can recall there was a young girl talking to Sheila for, it seemed like, quite a long time about getting time, giving permission to have people to have pig meat goats at their house.
Yeah, I was expecting she was going to show up at a meeting at some point, but I haven't seen her yet. But yeah, she was a very enthusiastic.
You think the chickens were out of balance, weren't they, to the goats? She was cute.
She was, she was very enthusiastic.
Yep.
Um, next in your packet, there are three resolutions, um, that have been included. The first is a resolution expressing disappointment at the repeal of the plastic bag van and employing residents, visitors and businesses of local governments to abide by the spirit of the van and voluntarily refuse to utilize plastic bags. So this is what I was referencing, um, after you spoke. So that resolution is in the packet. The next resolution is a resolution opposing any change in the definition of a commercial fishing operation. The Dare County Commissioners, um, took this or adopted this resolution at their January twenty-second meeting, um, basically trying to kind of stand in solidarity to protect our fishermen and their livelihood and the definitions of what they do. Um, what's, uh, some proposals out there would seek to change that and, um, classify fishermen based on what portion of their income comes from fishing. And so, um, that's what that resolution speaks, um, for. And the third resolution is a resolution supporting House Bill five fifty-one and Senate Bill five ninety-five, also known as Marcy's Law. Um, and basically this is to ensure victims' rights are preserved and protected. Um, and there's a, a question and answer segment, because some of you may not be familiar with Marcy's Law or the public may want more information on, um, Marcy's Law. But basically, we can take these, um, as one package or if you'd like me to take them individually. But I would like to, so, so propose, um, that we adopt, um, these three resolutions.
Hey, I just have a question, maybe I want to ask town attorney. I was looking through this and, uh, these pages aren't numbered, just come off exactly short where it is. Yeah, Marcy's Law. The one part it says to refuse, it, it says that a, um, a crime victim has the right to refuse an interview, deposition or other discovery request made by the accused or by any person acting on the behalf of the accused. If somebody's subpoenaed for deposition, they can't refuse to.
The victim can't in that particular case. I mean, it's, uh, that, well, you, and then anytime you issue a subpoena, you can, if you're out of state, that'd apply. If you're in state, then, but you, you can choose not to show up. And there are certain items that are forcible by contempt within the subpoena. So that's what that would come down to. But this is more carrying, it, this carries to the actual victim of a crime. It's specific to, as I understand the law at least. I'm not a criminal attorney, but nonetheless, that, that, my understanding would be yes, that they could under, under this particular law.
I'm totally a favor of it. I thought, I guess since it's law already and it's legal.
Right, that's right, that's right.
But I was just curious when I read that part of it. Thank you.
And, and I think it just goes to the overall intention, that the, the statute wants to lend to those victims.
I can see why. I'd like to make a motion that we approve these three, um, resolutions.
There's a second?
Second.
Any discussions or others in favor, please say no saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, a couple of other items, these aren't in your packet. Um, uh, Fisher Winnie mentioned the Rally to Raleigh, that's the, the road trip for the public. Anyone that's interested, they do have a bus leaving from, I think it's Nagsted that day. It's only ten dollars for a round trip to ride up with the bus and back. Um, and they've also got buses leaving from Wilmington and, oh gosh, there's one other place. Morehead City, so, which is great. I mean, um, the, in, like, motive in more drilling up of North Carolina is, is really promoting this as well as the surf rider. Um, so talk it up with your friends. I know locally they're saying, um, what's the catchphrase? No, it's about having to close that day. Um, basically, you know, businesses are having to close to be able to go.
Close, I think that's.
Yeah, I can't remember what it was. But anyway, that, um, to go rally and show your support for this, so. Um, and that date is, uh, February.
Three, six.
Three, six, thank you. Um, let's see, quickly, the roller beam, I'd seen on some questions and posts on Facebook about where that's, you know, when that's going to be completed. Um, it's my understanding and staff, please correct me if I'm wrong, um, most of the work has been done. We're waiting on getting a final, like, the final coating and, and painting on that. But unfortunately, the weather has not cooperated and we need a, um, stretch of five to seven days of fifty degree plus weather for that to be put down. And we haven't had that, we even know in the last time, we've had that stretch of, so anyway, um, staff are obviously looking at that. And, um, most of the work fortunately is done, but we need that stretch of time to, to be able to, to wrap things up there. Um, the Bay Drive Multi-Use Path Construction Project is going really well. It's resumed, um, in full force. We've been getting really great compliments from some of the citizens that live right there. Some of them who were really nervous about the project to begin with are now some of the biggest champions for, um, our staff and our contractors for how well they're working, um, on that project. So, um, I'm glad that's, that's moving right along. An update, if you recall, uh, actually Commissioner Winley at our last meeting brought up a question regarding the, um, the committee reception and spouse or not spouse. And we, um, proceeded and all of the board members and committee members have received invitations to our, um, committee reception. Where annually we like to bring the committee members together and thank them. This year's reception, the invitations went out to just the, the member of the committee. Um, what I'd like to suggest to the board is during budget, we talk about if we want to expand that next year to be spouses, to include spouses, that we would, um, address that at the budget and that way it would be a, a budget expense and we would, so if we can make that decision as a group during the budget time.
And that would be for the next, not this?
That would be for the next one. This one's already, it's been budgeted, we've sent invitations out. It would be hard to retract and change unless we want to pull money from somewhere. But I think we could, if we wanted to be proactive for next year and do it at that time. Okay, just following up there. Um, next month, I believe it's next month, our February twelfth meeting. Um, Karen Brown from the Chamber of Commerce is going to be here doing a presentation on, um, the community housing initiative. So it kind of taps into workforce housing, affordable housing. She's going to be able to provide a, a definition on the differences there and what the committee, there's a committee that's been formed that's working under the chamber, what work they're doing. So, um, they'll be on our agenda for February twelfth.
Do, do we have someone on that committee or?
Right now, we have the, the membership, there's not a set, um, government. Uh, it says, you know, in general, some county and town officials, but I'm not sure the exact makeup. Um, I had made a request.
I've been to a couple of them and, uh, but it was for the, for every single Walgreens and more business side. It's kind of a, different people come every single week, it's not a real set, uh, membership, yeah. Still pretty early.
Yeah, well, hopefully she'll be able to give us, yeah, an update on that and what they were at and, um, and who knows, maybe she'll be, uh, asking for ways for us to be more involved, so we'll see. But, um, anyway, I figure that would be timely, especially with some of the discussions we've had in the interest of board members, so. Um, let's see, I served on the Government Education Committee. We did not meet in January. Um, but one of the things that Bobby Dobbs, who is Dare County employee, that, um, the Government Channel Director, um, he and Dorothy Toulon have requested to make rounds at all the different towns to kind of highlight, especially it's very timely with towns having new board members and wanting to give an, an overview of, um, what the channel and the committee are about. So I believe they're going to come to our March meeting, I think. I think Mary and I talked about possibly. Is it March? Okay, so we will, um, see them at some point and probably give them a presentation and overview. And then the last thing I have is, um, I was invited and had accepted, um, the opportunity to go to Washington DC on February fifteenth and meet directly with Dr. Walter Kruipshank. He is the director of the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management. So, um, it's a, it's a pretty neat opportunity to go share our voice and represent the Outer Banks. So we have a, um, small group that's going to meet with him, um, we have an hour of his. So we have a small group that's going to meet with him, we have an hour of his time on February 15th, so I'll update you how that goes. But that is all we have this evening. With that, we move to Town Managers' Agenda.
I'll be the same.
Okay, welcome back.
Thank you, ma'am.
We're happy to have you back. So tell Victor thank you as well, and congrats that he's doing better. Town Attorney's Agenda.
Nothing to remove it.
Debbie, back to your consent agenda.
Yes, ma'am, we have several items on the consent agenda this evening, starting with the minutes from the January 8th Board of Commissioners meeting. Second is a memorandum of understanding between the town of Kilburg Hills and Dare County for use of building inspector services. Next is setting a public hearing for Nature's Workforce Housing Multi-Family Development. This is at 901 Knight Avenue in the LI One Zone. It's modifying Phase Two, Two Four Unit Structures and Associated Site Improvements. The public hearing would be recommended to be scheduled for March the 12th at 5:30. Approval of the consent agenda will be forward towards action. Number four is showing the consensus in the Board of Commissioners to approve a recommended amendment to the Kilburg Hills Personnel Policy, Section 28 Adverse Weather, excuse me, Adverse Weather Hazards Conditions. Number five is Teal Court Water Main Extension. This is another approval, consensus approval from the board. This was to allow for a water line to be installed that did not loop in this particular situation. It was agreed that neither lime redundancy or water quality issues were a factor in this case, and the Public Services Department and the town engineer recommended approval of the single non-looped water main. Number six is from past meetings, there was discussion about an appointment to the North Carolina Social, North Carolina Coastal, I think this not being able to talk tonight is kind of contagious, it's running all the way down. North Carolina Coastal Resource Advisory Council, and the nominee is Ike McRae, and you've got, received that information. This is also consensus from the board. Number seven, it was some calendar changes, and I do want to mention that on the page, the attachment, it shows the August 13th meeting being moved to August 22nd, which is correct, but it says that it's Monday and it's Wednesday, and that will be corrected, but I just wanted to verbalize that for you. July 9th meeting is moved to July 16th, and this information will be sent out to all our distribution sites. Then report is sale of surplus property. This is our property that we dispose of through GovDeals, which is an online auction service. And this is to show the revenue of $89,267.34 that we received in fiscal year 1617. And then lastly is a budget amendment to record grant fundings from North Carolina DEQ for 75% of the total cost from improvements to the Glenmere and Ferris Avenue Beach Access. And staff would recommend approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Seems like a long consent agenda tonight, but several of the things we had already addressed.
A lot, a lot just to get in the record.
Right, absolutely. So, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say a saying aye.
Aye.
You face. Okay, thank you.
On that, the second one, it says there that Doc Nalander has a building inspector on staff. Who's doing there?
He went to Japan.
Who's doing doc inspections?
They have agreements.
Oh, oh, okay.
I think they were working with Kitty Hawk. We had offered to assist, and I think we did do some, did some help. Yeah, it's a way that we actually are doing consolidation that doesn't necessarily use the word consolidation, but this, I'll elaborate just a little bit, this is to help, this is to help them with advancing some of their building inspectors by shadowing our Level Three, and that can also provide us some help at any point. We don't have our Level Three and they do.
And there's no money exchanged?
Yes.
Just agreement, yeah.
That's cool. It's the time we agreed up we could have one very large Level Three structure under construction right now, which is the Marriott at the south end of town. So it's a good learning experience for a lot of inspectors from neighboring municipalities and moving in, we don't have an inspector and that can do that, they can help with that also.
It's great collaboration.
Because, you know, those type of structures are very limited with a building inspector at that level in Dare County.
I saw that, they're, this is a big project. Wow.
Okay, well, we are on to the second time set aside this evening for public comment. Would you like to speak again?
I would.
Oh, absolutely. Come right up.
Sorry, it's two colors of the CAC. I was remiss in something I intended to say. I wanted to thank Michael Midgett for his contributions to the Community Appearance Commission while he was on it. He was great to work with and it was really nice. And again, to thank all of you, some of you have participated in really significant ways. I'm very excited about John and all of his great ideas, and thank you for mentioning Trash Attack. I knew you were going to, so that was great. And as an individual, I'd like to say, I volunteer to help with the dog park if that would be of any value to anyone. My three dogs will appreciate it.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this public comment time? Or have anything, anything else? I would like to say, Michael, you're kind of hiding in the back, I didn't see, I saw you when I walked in, but thank you for being here. And for those of you who don't know, former Commissioner Michael Midgett, so thanks for, good to see you here.
Nice to see you as well.
All right, with nothing else, then we'll take motion to adjourn.
Some moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You face. Great. Thank you, have a nice evening.
Thank you, everybody.